Today, we have a lot of amazing things to discuss. And this is a really good time, obviously, as Q one is winding down. I hope everybody's business is thriving, everybody's doing well and healthy. But today, we have some really amazing things to talk about. It's very exciting times for us as we are doing our first town hall meeting ever. And it's a long time coming. You know, a lot of the times that we've been, you know, doing things, it's been working out. But now it's really interesting because we can, you know, share all the amazing things that we've been working on. You all have definitely spoken to us over the last kind of 14 months about the things that you guys are looking for. You know what you want coming and we've been able to do a lot of things and just very excited to share that with you all. So the way that we're going to run this session today is we are going to talk through a few things. So we'll get into why we started right see, because I know there's a lot of people on this call that it may be their first time ever hearing about right. So we'll get into that. What is right C two point O and why are we calling it that? And what are the new things that we are bringing to market, which is very exciting? All the new pricing tiers, so we have come out with some new pricing. Our product roadmap, so we're going to be able to actually share that with you all. So you all know what is coming for the rest of the year, which some of the higher level things that we have slated to do. The innovation of office hours for righties. So we're going to be bringing that and talk a little bit more about that. And then we're going to end with the live demo of some of the new features that we are rolling out. And so without further ado, my name is Brandon Mitchell. I am the CEO and founder of right dot com. Right C dot com is a future of work SaaS platform that is streamlining operations and business management for all service based businesses, but particularly writing and coaching based businesses as of now. My background, if you don't know, I was the founder of a company called brand resumes dot com, which was a resume writing and career coaching business that scaled to 40 riders and half a million dollars in revenue in 18 months. Since then, I've kind of went to the side of trying to empower more writers and coaches around the world through technology. So I have a big background in technology. I worked at one of the largest technology accounting and advisory firms called P W C. And nowadays I spend a lot of my time working on how to improve the system, how to make you y'all's lives easier and things like that. And Leander, I will let you go ahead and introduce yourself as well.
Thank you, Brandon. So yeah, I'm Leander Howard, the second chief marketing officer at Rice. He joined about two weeks ago. Me and Brandon have been in contact since I started my first business sparked your resume, which is a resume writing and career coaching business as well. I heard Brandon on our annual leisure and I had to reach out. He's always been helpful since then. And when I graduated from Georgia State University in May of 2020, with a dual degree in finance and marketing, I started my career at Adobe as a financial analyst. August of 2020 and recently went full time and to spark the resume and now right see, to help more businesses really streamline and automate their systems and really just teach people entrepreneurship based on what I've done so far. It will spark your resume. So happy to be here, happy to help more writers and coaches really see the, see the other end of business and excited for this meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And we have, and it's not just us, we have a big team. So I just want to give a quick shout out to a lot of the folks on the team that was very instrumental in this presentation and putting this together. So no, thank you a ton. Mitchell, Amit, you know, Hansa, obviously our CTO. And then all the amazing folks that have been helping, supporting and just championing us as we have definitely taken the market by storm. And we've got a lot of things coming. So thank you all. I'm real excited to get into this. So before we get started, there's, there's a few polls. So Leander, I'll kind of let you run with this and I'm going to launch the first one.
Yeah, most definitely, man. So I want to, you know, get to know who we're, who we're targeting or who we're, who we're speaking to, speaking to today. So do you currently have a resume writing or a career coaching business? If you can answer, yes, I do or no, I do not, that'd be great. How many years have you been in business? Zero years, one to two years, two to four years, five to seven years or 10 plus years. Next question. What's your current annual revenue? How much money are you making your business right now? And what's your biggest fear as an entrepreneur? I know we all have them, so.
I know mine is losing all my money.
That's a fact.
For sure.
I know. Favorite ice cream color? Ice cream color, I think Brandon said that earlier, sorry. Ice cream flavor, my man. Vanilla, strawberry, chocolate. And if it's other, put your favorite ice cream flavor in the chat. I know mine is.
Chocolate chips. So I'm.
Cookie dough. Yeah.
So we're going to end up in it. So, um, you know, now that we know just about everything from, from each other, we're going to get really nice acquainted over this next 45 minutes or so. We have lots to talk about, lots to cover. So it's going to be very jam packed. So please pay attention because there's a lot of things that is going to be spoken about today. And if you're watching the recording, hello, and I hope you enjoy the presentation. So let's talk about why we started right C, especially if you don't know. Bright C really came out of the innovation of wanting to help more writers and coaches be able to better manage their business. You know, especially if you are a solopreneur, you know, just coming out, trying to really figure it out. It's, there's a lot of different noise in the technology space when it comes to making things more efficient. And I always say that it doesn't matter if you're doing two orders or five orders or a hundred orders a month. You really want to make sure that you're using the most sustainable, simplest form to communicate with your business. Being able to kind of manage your leads, your prospects, manage your orders and especially around communicating. Because a lot of times, you know, if you, if you're currently running an up running client, sometimes they want to text you, they want to call you, they want to email you, they want to DM you. And so being able to streamline that communication and make it all in one house where folks have a dedicated space to communicate, right? Because communicates, you get really messy. And then team collaboration, this is one of my favorite ones, especially if you are at the phase of having a team, which most people do aspire to be, and it's also amazing if you just want to be a solopreneur. But if you do ever decide to, you know, hire some contract writers or coaches and expand your business from an agency perspective, you want to be able to sustainably do that as the business owner. And then a lot around order management. And this is one of the biggest challenges that a lot of riders and coaches face is being able to, you know, get a customer into the door and be able to manage that process, whether it's a three day turnout or seven to 10 business days. How are you collecting documents? How are you sending intake forms and you're sending appointment scheduling and managing the revisions and all the back and forth and all the comments and revisions and edits? You know, we make that really easy. And that was one of the key reasons behind right scene, why we've innovated in the space, especially around our ability to track document versions in the platform. And then just overall project management, right? So, you know, it's all about being better, smarter, more efficient, faster. And there's a lot of different tools out there, but you know, where rights he comes in is that we were specifically built for you all. So we started in just about December of 2020. So we're a little over, you know, a year old and things have been going great and it's just really exciting. But we always talk about why we started and especially, you know, at a, at a time like this where there's so much noise. So later I'll let you take this away.
Thank you, Brandon. So what is right C two point O? CRM and project management, I'm a big marketing automation and sales guy. So I'm very, very excited about introducing the customer relationship management side of right. See some capabilities you will have our text message, marketing, email, marketing, website building and automation. And then with project management, you'll have order management or order statuses, real time chat features with, with your clients invoices and a tipping feature. So we're going to get into what's new at customer relationship management. So with the CRM, you'll have email marketing, SMS marketing, so two way texting with your customers, sales funnels that you can build. So you can actually map out from landing page to website builder to a form to a survey. Whatever you want your funnels to look like, you can map it out on a system. So you can actually build a website builder, you actually build any type of website on the platform. So landing pages or a whole custom website, we actually have some templates that we'll show you later with a career coaching website looks like. Call tracking. So if you have sales reps, I think this is very, very important to give them feedback, right? So all calls can be recorded within the platform. You have surveys and forums that you can actually do conditional logic with on the backend booking and appointment. So no need for like Cali or Acuity scheduling, you can have as many event types, as many teams as you want on right C as well. And then the CRM and pipeline management to manage your deal flow, your opportunities. And then tracking and analytics, so you can see call reporting, agent reporting, booked appointment, reporting, all that good stuff. And then your courses and digital products is very, very important. A lot of people have courses or webinars, they want to host or sell. You can actually do that on the right C platform now. And then reputation management, so managing all your Google reviews and listings, you can do that as well inside the platform.
Right. And I just want to add in that this is so monumental for us and we are really excited unveiling this because we didn't have these capabilities before. But really we listened to, you know, what are, what are folks really looking for out of right? See, you know, we started off really doing a lot of great project management and order management, which is phenomenal. But as we look to grow as a software company and look to really serve who we want to serve, we really figured out that if we're going to do that, not only do we need to help you manage your business, but we also need to help you grow your business or organization. And a lot of times that's going to be being able to market. So we didn't have that before. So now that's going to be awesome to be able to get in there, do some email templates, do some text marketing, especially if you haven't even explored that for your business and be able to save some money, especially on some of these tools, if you're, if you're using other tools for that, because now it's going to be all in house. And that's our goal, right? Is to become an all in one business management solution where you can do everything in house as you need. And I know that there's a lot of you out there that are thinking about some of this stuff, especially around courses, digital courses, just in general are picking up. As you've seen over the last, you know, year, everybody comes out with a course and whether it's a free course, paid course. And so I know a lot of folks have been thinking about that and looking for a system and a solution. And so those are the things that you're going to be able to do really, really efficiently. So we're very, very, very excited about the CRM. We can't stop smiling about it because it's awesome and you're going to be able to see in a little bit. All right. So what does right to two point O mean for the, for the order management slash project management side? And I'll talk through this. And so if you're a current right C customer, you are obviously using it every day. It's, it's a tool that you're jumping into. But some of the key things that we want to highlight, especially so that you know, is available and that you can start using as of today is the due date management. And so a lot of times pre right C two point O, if you were looking to kind of, you know, sort through, okay, you have this client coming on Monday, a new client on Tuesday, new client on Wednesday. You know, one of those projects do, and you might've had to have been using maybe another system or a task management tool, or just trying to just simply remember when projects are due. But now we give you the ability to set due dates per project. And when you do that, it lets you know automatically 72 hours, 24 hours before the project is due. If it's not at a hundred percent complete, which is great. And then if the project is passed due, it gives you a notification that goes to you as the business owner. Or if it's a team, it goes to the individual writer. We also have now have a project management dashboard. So what you'll be able to see outside of just the sales dashboard, which is really cool, where you can see all your sales analytics, is an actual projects tab where you can see order, order statuses and project statuses. So it gives you almost like a roll up view of everything that's going on in your business so that you can really easily and efficiently keep track of all the different things. Multi currency support. And so right C is international. We are in about seven countries already and growing by the day. And so we heard that we definitely need to make sure that we are, you know, doing the most that we can to be able to better serve our international users. And so there is support for the Canadian currency, Euro, pound, I believe, the Australian dollar as well, and then USD. So we have about five currency features now available. Now, if you do switch over, it will switch your entire infrastructure automatically. And all of the new orders that come in, if you're using our right to checkout process will be in that currency. So that was something that was very important to our international folks. And maybe if you go abroad and you want to switch it up, well, you're able to do that, which is very exciting and it's all processed through Stripe. And then the advent of additional notes. And so this is very specific. And if you are a current customer, this is directly for you. So if you haven't seen, there's a global feature that you can turn on. And I think we turned it on for everybody, but it's additional notes. And so when you're sending a document through right C going forward, it allows you to be able to send almost like a message to the person. And so before this, if you were sending a document through the system, you're just simply PDF or doc send. But now it gives you an opportunity to give a little bit of context, a little bit of information as you're sending those draft documents for every version. And also when you're saying that final version of your documents, which is very exciting because you weren't able to do that before. So you don't have to like, you know, send them a chat message or send them an email. You can say whatever you want to introduce that document with, which is awesome. And then also now we have the ability to integrate your social medias in your customer portal. And so this is big because, you know, they're coming into that portal every single day to figure out what's going on in their order, see what's going on, communicate with you as a team or a business. And now they, at the bottom tab, they can see your Facebook, your Instagram, your Twitter, your LinkedIn. So what we want to do is increase exposure for your business. And so now all of your customers can also engage with you socially, which is very important, right? You know, re like your stuff and reshare it and retweet it and et cetera. So that's new and we're very excited about that. And then real time notifications. And so before right C two point O, we only really had email based notifications. And so on all the touch points that go on, things were email. Now you're able to do that. And then reporting exports. And if you haven't checked this out, this is so amazing, especially for those that want to like, take, you know, data out of right C or manipulate the data, all the orders. If you go to the orders tabs, there is now a reporting tab where you can click on that and you can spin up a CSV report. Basically with all of your data, so allows you to select a date range. It allows you to select even questions within a specific questionnaire and pull that. So if you want to, you know, generate a report of, let's say, all your customers, you know, what was their favorite job title or what they're looking for? If you want to, you know, figure out how they found you, et cetera. You can do that in a very simple CSV manner that gets sent to you via email and then speed enhancements. And so right C is super fast, super snappy. It's built on some of the latest and greatest technologies, but we are also making right C faster. So that is something that we are definitely doing so that, you know, it's just a better customer experience across the board. And so between the CRM additions and enhancements, as well as some of the amazing and new things that we're doing on the project management side, that is the new version of right scenes. So we're very, very, very excited about that. And so, you know, there's a lot of different features. But when we think about, you know, how do I use all this and what does it mean? A lot of it is just strategy, right? Because a lot of times, you know, you can have all the features in the world, right? Software is not the solution, understanding how to use a software and how to really leverage each feature is a solution. And it's a lot about strategy. And so there's a lot of things that we are introducing because a lot of times we are realizing that, you know, folks need a little bit more help. They need a bit more assistance and we're going to make that a lot easier. So Leander, I'll let you talk about this.
Most definitely, man. Thank you. So yeah, we're going to introduce business bundles. I've really been working day in and day out, trying to figure out how to really teach entrepreneurship. I think that's one thing that is very hard to do because you have to put everybody different business perspectives in mind. So just making it easy and simplifying it to where you guys can understand how to really automate and systematize your infrastructures is very, very important to myself and the team at right C. So we have lead generation sequences, follow up sequences, website templates that we're adding on as a service to right C. To make it easier for you guys, my, my goal is honestly to give you a business in a box and then teach you how to navigate and use the platform to where you can strive and do what you do best. I know a lot, like I see a lot of you guys content on LinkedIn is awesome, like it's fire. But it's like, what are you doing with that content? Right? It's one thing to get the attention, but how are you, you know, monetizing the attention? Because at the end of the day, we're all in business to make money and feed our families and whatever other reasons you may have. But I think one thing I've seen a lot of entrepreneurs fail at is really lead generation, right? Nurturing, capturing those leads and turning those leads into customers. I mean, they're already interested in you and your services. It's just how are you actually, you know, streamlining the process of capturing their data and then turning them into a customer? So that's what I want to help with. And that's what these, that's what these bundles will do for you. So if you're interested in those bundles, we can set up a strategy call, we'll have all that information at the end of the, end of the demo.
Absolutely. And these are exciting because it's almost done for you. So you get to plug and play. And if email, if you've been struggling with email marketing or text marketing, we are going to take the thoughts and hiring copyrighters and people out of it. So you're able to just add that into your system. And so some of the most exciting things, like I said, is we are going to be offering new pricing and plans. And this is going to be really exciting because this is a shakeup, right? We've had the same, the same pricing setup since we've launched, but we are introducing some new things and some new tiers. So really be able to target, target all phases of business owners, especially and kind of meet you where you're at, right? And so I'll jump into this and let's break down each one of the new right seed pricing tiers and packages, which is very exciting. So going forward, we are now introducing a new tier called right C starter. Um, right C starter will be a standard $97 per month, one user access where you are going to be able to get the order management side of the house, right? So you're going to be able to do a lot of the project management features that we discussed today. But when it comes to this new addition of the CRM, it's so, so, so powerful. And what you're going to be able to do is select features from that list of what is available. So specifically having the CRM and pipeline management, which is important to just to keep track of your customers. So that's going to be available for this, just a starter user. And the starter really is a design for those who are really kind of just getting started, right? So you may just be testing the waters, it may be a bit new business owner, it may be having, you know, really crack the code on figuring out how to, you know, really get your business in the door. But you'll be able to do that, collect payments and tips, do basic email and text marketing, which is being able to just, you know, text, do a mass text, do a mass email now. That does not have marketing automation and we'll get to that, but it is an ability to just send out like a canned email or text blast. Multi currency support, obviously the order management, and then you will be able to get a website builder. So let's say you are just getting started and you don't have a website. You'll be able to build a website within right C and spin that up. You just have to purchase the domain. And so really this is aimed to be just really for folks that are getting started, really haven't cracked the code yet. And it's just looking to have a better solution rather than using 10,000 tools plus Google spreadsheets and the Google forums and all things that we kind of figure out. So that's the first starter. So that's exciting because we haven't had a lower tier part, uh, package. Now, for those who are already, obviously right C customers, as well as those that are looking for a little bit more of a better solution. We are now introducing the starter plus. And so the starter plus is really just an extension of the current right C package that you might have. And so what that means is that you are going to get access to a lot more and the full breadth of what we do on the order management, project management and the CRM side. And so it won't be select features, you will have the full gambit to really run your business. And so this is really for those that are really looking for growth, really looking at, you know, sustainably management, probably most time, mostly, you know, full time entrepreneurs are those that are really looking to kind of scale up and just have a better solution to just do more and make more money. And so I'm not going to go through every single one. I'll take you, I'll let you have a look at it. But essentially you're having a lot of sales features, right? Which is super, super, super important. We are coming in to do a lot of the marketing that Leander mentioned, when we spoke about all the different things that you get in the CRM. You will be able to have all the project management features, all the reporting features. And this is so important because this is going to be able to have you really get into that growth stage of your business. And this is also still for a single user. So if you were on the current right C plan, it is going up in price just a little bit because you're essentially getting more than a thousand dollars worth of software for just that addition. So the price is going up just slightly, but this is really basically based for those that are looking to scale and grow. So just a small extension of what you've currently been doing in the rights ecosystem. And this is very exciting, especially if you're using tools when I can just bring it all in house and really have one management hub. What we don't want is for you to be doing all these different features and functions and different tools. And that's what folks have been asking for. And so we are finally, and really happy to be able to announce that. So starter plus is going to be that. And then for small teams, right? And so we really thought really hard over the last kind of 14, 15 months of how do we tackle teams? So we are changing up the dynamics of what that looks like. So you will have access to, you know, all of the features within the, then the project management side, the CRM side. It will now only be for five users as the maximum. So that is a small change and it is going up very slightly in price, which if you think about it, it, you set, you save as you, as you scale up. And you will be able to do a lot of the cool things. And so if you're not familiar with what the professional license includes, it, it gives you all this, but it gives you a lot of awesome features to be able to manage a team, right? So one of the biggest highlights from the professional license, which is super exciting, is the ability to enable document revisions, tracking, especially documents approvals, I'll correct myself. So with document approvals, what you're able to do is when a rider is sending a draft to a specific customer, it will go to the admin portal for a approval. So allows you to kind of sit in between the process, kind of like just a quality control or allows you to have that. There's also a chat with admin feature where you're able to speak directly to your writers, which is useful if you have a team to have that real time communication. There's just a slew of other things around like the writer analytics, which is really important if you are managing a small team and just being able to delegate, right? Just simply just basic delegation. If it's not just you and your business and you have a team and you feel like you need to be able to better manage who's doing what. And if you're looking to grow, right? So if you're looking to maybe get an additional writer, have an interview coach on your team, have a career coach or just have any type of additional writer, even if you're not running a specifically resume or career coaching business, whoever you want to bring on your team, this will be a great solution for that. And so obviously if you are a current user, this is just going up slightly because you are getting a lot of awesome features moving forward. And so for enterprises, I won't cover this too much, but if you are an enterprise, you are essentially getting everything. Enterprise is custom pricing. So if you are an enterprise, if you have more than five riders, you can definitely reach out to us and we can talk about that. And one of the biggest things is typically app configuration. So there is an ability to request custom features. You have enterprise support team on the advocates for you. And this is for folks that are a little bit more on that larger scale. So we do have some enterprises, folks with 40 riders, you know, soon some with like 300 riders. And so this is really exciting to be able to help those folks out from a deeper perspective as we become like that hub for managing your business. So very excited about this and, and kind of where we're going. It's a big change, but we think this is going to be for the better and we are really excited about that. So what does this mean for you who's on this call? Is that we are rolling these changes out April 1st. So it's really exciting. A lot of this stuff is ready to go. We've been working day in and day out to try and really be able to serve you all. And I know folks have been waiting on folks have been very anxious like, hey, can I, like, when is it coming? Can I pay now? So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to introduce it right now. It's coming April 1st, right? So literally two days, very exciting. As we hit Q two, we are giving you the tools to grow and scale and literally take over. So very exciting stuff. So change will be in effect. So if you're a current customer, you will see a change. And if you are a new right C customer, you will be able to kind of go in and be able to get that. It's very exciting. So when we talk, when we think about, oh, that sounds great. We're hopefully everybody's excited about that and then having to be able to do that. Let's talk about where rights is going because we are doing a lot of different things. We are hiring like crazy right now. We are growing, we are scaling. But there's a lot of people that are interested in like, what does right C in the future look like? I'm using this tool today. I love it. A lot of the users love it. But where are we going? So when we think about the future of right C, we really think about being able to do three things very, very, very successfully. What that's going to be is lead generation. And so lead generation has been one of the biggest topics of 2021 and even into 2022. And we're looking to be able to make that a little bit easier for businesses who are looking for more business. You know, sales and marketing is not, you know, the specialty for a lot of different people. And so what we're looking to do is be able to have leads in our system in a tab where we're going to be doing a lot of the sales and marketing for you. And very similar to how the, you know, if you ever use LinkedIn, Pro Finder, or if you've used bar or thumbtack.com, we'll be able to provide high quality leads in the system for you to be able to find customers a little bit easier. And so that is very exciting. So we do have that going to be rolled out within the next few months. We're working day in and day out. There will be a contractor network coming. And you know, what this means is that you will be able to toggle to be discovered by other businesses. And so we have a lot of things in the funnel, a lot of conversations going on around folks that are, that are consistently looking for new riders and new coaches to kind of give projects to and be able to expand. And so you'll be able to be part of a network where you can be discovered and then folks can then, you know, put you into their account so that you can manage some of their projects and leads. So it's another extension of helping you grow your business and discovering. So this is great for folks that are going to be looking to just do more work, or maybe you're just a contractor. You're not necessarily a business owner just yet, and you'll be able to find new business there. Custom emails. And so one of the biggest things right now is you do not, you do not currently have the ability to change the language within the custom emails and all the touch points that go out. We've done our best to standardize the language, which has worked wonderfully. But we do know that that's something that folks are looking for and asking for. So that will be coming very soon, which is exciting. And then custom reminders. Obviously the platform is very intuitive and it's really simple to use, but there's a lot of people that, you know, and customers that still forget things, right? And so we are going to build it into where you might be able to add into your workflow reminders at certain touch points. So let's say if they don't, you know, send their document to you, it'll remind them if they do not respond to a draft in, you know, 24 hours, it'll remind them. And so we're just trying to do more to be able to make your life easier and reduce the amount of manual things that you're doing in your business. We need to speed it up, make things faster, simpler, more efficient. And everything we do is going to be at the core of that. And what's going to be really exciting is changing the dynamics of our entire architecture. And so what that will mean, and this will really be a lot for team collaboration, is you will be able to, in the future, have the ability to have multiple contributors working on a specific project. So as of today, it's a one to one between a writer and a customer. But in the future, you'll be able to assign many different people to a order so that they can communicate with you inside of the order, do things. And whether that's for different projects like book writing or content writing or any type of writing, not just, you know, resume writing, you'll be able to do that. So that's very exciting to be able to have that type of collaboration. And that's been a big priority and a big feature for us. So this is the right C roadmap for 2022. Please drop in the comments how you feel about this, because we do want to get some, some, some feedback from you all. Cause a lot of this has been driven from how you'll feel about obviously the software and what has been asked for. And obviously there's a slew, a slew of other things that's not on this that we are going to be tackling. So if you've sent us feature ideas or requests, just know that that does go to our product backlog and that we are always trying to prioritize the things that folks are asking for. If there's one thing that people will tell you about right C is that when you ask for something, it happens. And so we, we are going to, we're going to try to keep that up in 2022. And so Leander, let's talk about this.
Yeah, most definitely. Thank you, Brandon. So like I mentioned before, I think education is one thing that we have to focus on a lot when it comes to building businesses. So we want to, you know, bring you guys office hours, so weekly office hours to talk to myself and Brandon and the rest of the right C team about how we can help you really implement the software. about how we can help you really implement the software um to better suit your business at the end of the day. So I think we'll start this probably the second week of April. I know we're doing a little bit of traveling this month. Um, catch us live in Philly in about two weeks. Uh, and then we'll probably host those coming that week after we get back from Philly, I think around the fourteenth. Will probably be the first office hours, but we'll send out an email to let you know for sure. So about forty-five minutes, just hop in on a Zoom call. Um, and ask us any questions you may have about the software, um about your business and we'll and we'll go from there. So just drop in, ask questions. We'll also be creating a a video resource hub. That way you can go back and see the recordings of office hours. Um, maybe catch some gems you can implement to your business.
In addition to that, just um video resources in general, right? So if there's certain, uh, you know, commonly asked questions around, you know, how do I reset a a customer's password or where do I go for that? We're going to be rolling out a library of short and informative videos where you can figure out things on the go. Um, because you know, the software is really to be used as like a self-service tool. So we're doing uh the most that we can to empower you to be able to quickly do things for your customers. So this is very exciting. And office hours are going to be free. This is not, you know, something you have to pay for. This is going to be a value add to you all to be able to get closer to us as well as um any questions that you may have, right? And so no question is a dumb question. And so we want to be able for you that to be able to just jump in, drop back, uh get your questions answered and do that. Um, and so um a lot of that has been said, we're really excited to kind of now jump in and show you a little bit more about like the new things. And we got, we're doing pretty good on time. Um, so that you can see what are the, what are some of the new features? And then we'll be able to um jump into that. Uh, but before we do that, um, I'll take a quick pause here. If you have not seen right C just yet and you are potentially a new potential customer, or this all sounds very exciting to you, just take some time, pull out your phone and scan this QR code. Um, this will take you to a page where you can schedule a demo at a later date because we're going to jump into some really cool stuff going forward. But we want to make sure that everybody has this link. So if you haven't seen right C just yet and you're interested in seeing uh obviously, we spoke about a lot of the new features today, but there's a slew more. We have um that where you can go ahead and schedule. So please, 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 I implore all of you, if you have not um seen the right C system, or if you're interested and you haven't done that yet, please um just take some time, quickly scan this QR code. Um, if you don't have a QR code reader uh and you don't have that capability right now, you can also just go to our website. So W W W dot right C dot com. And you can navigate to the uh schedule a demo. But um I'll give another ten fifteen seconds for you all to be able to do this. Uh, have it up uh and then find some time around your schedule to go ahead and do that. So with that said, um what we'll do before before we take questions um is I'll stop sharing. And Leander, if you want to go ahead and and jump in and and share, and uh let's kind of get into some of the cool things.
I think first thing first, I'll show you like kind of what a course looks like um on right C. I know a lot of people have digital products. So I've actually booked the course with Spark your resume on right C called the Career Toolkit. And you can actually brand it to where like it's white label, right? So nobody will ever know you're running on right C. Um, as you can see, it has sparked your resume dot memberships up top um in the URL. And you can just press like start course here. And it'll take you to the actual lesson. You can see the video I created for the Career Toolkit. Um, you have your about section here. You can write all your details for your course. You can have your instructor bio. Um, and then everything is there. Let me go back to the categories. So you can have different categories as well. So you can break down the course for your clients or customers um into different modules. So if I go to module one of the Career Toolkit, you'll see the video I have here, the about lesson, and you can also have files. So you can upload new files, thumbnails for the course, and they have the instructor bio on the right. I press the file, it comes up just like this, so they can download it easily here and just get all your, all the information they need um within the course. So I hope you guys like that. And then let's go to the actual pipeline. So this is just a dashboard area of right C to where you can see like opportunities, pipeline, value, conversion rate, um funnels. So this is all of your funnels on right C, stage distribution. This is based on like when I, when I mean by education, like how you want to segment your audience when they come into your pipeline. Um, that's where stage distribution comes in. And then if I go to like opportunities, you'll actually see what I'm talking about. Um, and I'm gonna go to our free resume review and new lead pipeline. So in this pipeline, we segment our audience based on pretty much warm lead, cold leads, and then like who's interested in our low-ticket offer. So this is real-time data, real-life data. So hope take some notes. Um, but yeah, this is how you segment your audience when they come in because you don't know who's coming in from social media, correct? So you want to make sure that these people are segmented off when they do come in. Um, but the pipeline, you will have your sales reps here. Um, the name of the the actual client that comes in deal value is pretty much just your average order value. So however, whatever your prices are for your services, just take the average of that and put as your deal value. That can let your sales team know you know, how much potential money they have to make in um in the pipeline at the moment. Okay?
I just want to add in that if you don't have a sales team and you are the sales team that you would be using this. So this would be for you.
Right. So conversations, you can see here. Um, this is where you can do all your text and email marketing. So you can send SMS right here. You can also have as many templates in right C as you want. Um, you do dropdown, you can have all all of these templates here. You can type it in by keyword. So type in appointment reminder, boom, I can just put it there, press use template and it'll send just like that. And then SMS, I mean, email is the same thing. So um you can actually change out, you know, the name that you want to send it from and the email that you want to use. Um, and then you can type your subject line here, or you could also do templates for emails as well. Boom, dropdown, you have all your templates here. So it's really like one click, as long as you set your system up correctly. Um, you should just be pressing buttons, to be honest, to get things, to get things done. And then just really quickly, I'll go to the contact record and what that looks like. So you can actually see all your contacts in here or the contact, this is the contact record view. So you you can see everything going on with this actual contact. So first, last name, general info, additional info is pretty much custom values. So you can create as many custom values as you want. Um, and I'll dive into that a little bit later. This is your actual sale. This is the person that's assigned to the contact record. Um, and then these are all the activity, right? So you you can see exactly you know, how this contact came into the system. They visited this page. They submitted the form, the contact was created. They visited this page, they visited this social media page, where they came from social media. Um, they booked the appointment, they visited this page and appointment booked. So like you can keep up with everything in one hub. You can set as many tasks as you want for the contact record. You can add any notes and schedule appointments pretty seamlessly. And you just do add new uh for appointments, it'll pop up here. You can select your calendar, whatever calendar you want to book the appointment on. Um, the team member, the time. Um, you can also update the context time zone, se- select the date and the time slot and then book the appointment. And you can add like any notes to um the appointment as well, if you need to. Calendars, I know this is big. So one, one big thing about the calendars, or one thing I really, really love, like I, I think I mentioned previously, is like the appointment um statuses. So I know for me, I was using another CRM before I even switched to Ricey, right? Um, and it was just really hard to keep track of like who canceled, who showed, who rescheduled, whatever. Now all your sales team has to do, or you as the founder, you're taking sales calls, is coming here to the appointment and click confirm, reschedule, invalid, canceled, show it or no show to update the status of that contact record. And that could also trigger automation to where you can send them emails and text messages to get them back on the books. So there's no more hassle of trying to chase people down to get them on, to get them to reschedule or send them notifications to get them back on, to get them back on the books. I think that's very, very important. And then calendar settings is where you can actually make as many calendars as you want. Um, you can create as many teams as you want. So I have a free resume review team. Where I can put all my sales reps on, I can just dive in really quickly on like how to edit the calendar, just so you can see what it looks like. So it's this team event and setup, and this is called round of Robin. So this will actually distribute different leads to different people as you set it up. So you can do it based on like medium, high and low priority, um to the point where maybe you got a killer in sales, right? You want to give them the leads first. You could put that person as high priority. Um, and then maybe another person could be medium or low. And you can just select the name, description, the URL, event color, and then um press save and it'll take you to the availability. So you can do your slot duration. So if you want to do a fifteen-minute call and a slot interval is um how what time periods people can actually book appointments. So this is a fifteen-minute call, five-minute buffer. So anybody can book appointments from the twenty-minute mark. So twenty-nine, twenty-nine, forty, ten AM will be at a time slot. Minimum scheduling notice. So nobody can schedule an appointment within an hour. Um, and then the date range is five days. So they can only see the next five days available on the calendar. Um, and then here is the office hour. So you can have office hours for your actual calendar to where we're open from nine to nine. And then the availability for the people that's on the calendar will actually be integrated with this specific calendar. So if I have my availability specifically is from four to seven, I will only be booked from four to seven PM. If that makes sense. And then confirmation. So you can actually create custom forms here as well. Sticky contact is really cool. So say if somebody uploads a form um first, and then you redirect them to book an appointment, their contact information will automatically be populated. So there's no duplicating emails or switching up names. They're not, they don't have to fill out that information anymore. And then you can, you know, auto reminders for appointments, all that good stuff, allow rescheduling, just check off those boxes. And another cool thing is you can add your Facebook pixel ID. So you can actually track those people or retarget those people as they take action on any forms that you have on right C. And then our forum submit redirect. I want to make that clear that you can actually send somebody to a link after they fill out the form. So I know that's very, very popular. Uh, we want to make sure that you know you can do that on here. Or you can have a custom thank you message. So either or you can choose from. And then contacts. So one cool thing about the contacts, um we, you can actually make smart list. So if you want to segment your audience on right C, all you have to do is click this more filters here on the right. And you can filter by anything. So say I want to do custom fields um that I have in the system. So we're like, you know, what type of experience, what type of profession are you, right? So I want to segment my audience based on um undergrad, entry level, mid-career, executive. So whoever answers this question, I can make a lead list and say, okay, these are all my mid-career executive people. This is the answer they chose on the form. I can make a list called mid-career executive, press apply, save my smart list. And the cool thing about it is if anybody else fills out that form and they meet that criteria, it will automatically add them to the list. So you don't have to like keep refreshing the list over and over again. I think this is very cool because segmenting your audience and actually talking to those type of people um is very, very, you know, it's a marketing tactic. It's very, very important to really speak to people directly. Um, so if you can actually segment your audience as they come in, you'll have, I think you'll have more success when it comes to closing more deals. When it comes to marketing, we have the email builder. Right? So the email builder, I know that's very, very important. We can just do create new email. Um, simple, just show you this really quickly what it's like to actually create an email in right C now. So now you have the email builder, you can drag and drop text, images, buttons, dividers, socials, footers, codes, videos, shopping carts, RSS headers and RSS items. Um, one cool thing we do have now is media, which I feel like is really, really cool. Uh, you can, like, your media is, think of it as like a Google Drive for your marketing team. So instead of having to download all your graphics from Canva, every time you want to put it in the email, have them upload all of your images here um and create folders. That way, if I want to go to, you know, Leander's folder, it's my birthday pic, I can just, you know, copy it from the clipboard here and go back to the email, paste it in here and it's automatically in the email, just like that. Boom, done. And you can do the same thing for videos, right? So videos, you can do uh Wistia, Vimeo, YouTube um or HTML. So you just copy the link from YouTube and it'll automatically have the thumbnail there driving traffic to your YouTube video or Vimeo or Wistia video. Okay? And then one other cool thing is the trigger links. Um, just really quickly. So you can create as many links in here. I know that's a bottleneck in a lot of people's business, having to find links. I go to the website, copy it again. No more of that, right? So create, put all your links in the system. That way, when you go trying to text somebody for, maybe they want to see your website or testimonials or pricing page, whatever the case may be, the links are readily available. Right? So you're you're clicking a button and it's done. Um, you can also implement those links in in templates. So you see templates here as well. You can do as many text messaging or email templates. I got about a hundred and thirty already. Um, so you can add text templates or add email templates here. Add text, come in here, do all your custom values, trigger links right here. So all my trigger links are right here. I can do, hey, this is my package, perfect. And the the link will go out and it'll actually track if they click on the link. Okay? So you can actually see that in their contact record I showed you earlier. Um, you can actually trigger automation as well based on the links they they click on. So say if somebody visits a website, that you can have an automation set up. Okay, an hour after they click, hey, Brandon, did you have a chance to check out the website? Now it's not, it's not something you have to remember to do. Um, and that's a little bit of automation one-on-one. And then the website builder. You have forms and surveys as well. I already showed you what a course looks like. And then the chat widget, I'll go to right C dot com real quick. We actually implemented our own chat widget. This is what it looks like. So people can come on the website, ask you a question, and it'll go right into this, to the, to the system now.
Game changer.
It's definitely a game changer. Anything else you want me to touch on specifically, Brandon?
No, I mean, I I I think this is phenomenal. So and then you can always click the right C O M S and 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 that, you know, you're right into the um into the project management side of right C. So this is phenomenal. This is exactly what what we've been looking to do to be able to help folks grow their business. Um, so really excited that um this is now available. So really excited about you all being able to use this, implement this, and again, continuously scale up and grow your business. So go ahead, um, Leander, and stop sharing. I'll I'll share my screen. I'll get into, there's a few quick um things on the uh CMS side and on the on the OMS side, and we will kind of jump into it. So um, some quick and 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 easy things um that I wanted to show you all. So if you can see my screen. Um, when it comes to now, the project management view that I discussed earlier, you all that will now be able to have this tab uh next to the sales tab called projects, where you can see all of your uh open orders. But the cool thing is that we now have this um this uh project status. So you can see what's going on. And this is like really a great view, who's the writer, or if it's just you or a team, due soon. So that means that it's um, it's due within uh seventy-two hours. If you see like a green on track, that means that it's it's uh more than seventy-two hours before it's due. And then if something is past due, you can see that. So it keeps you really uh on top of everything that's going on. And a major thing is this new activity log, where you can jump into the activity log. And and you'll be able to see all of the attached files and everything that went on without going into the customer portal. So from the admin, you can just quickly figure out what's going on without jumping into the customer portal. And so we're making it easier to navigate, easier to pu- pull documents without and and minimizing the amount of clicks uh necessary to get to files and see what's going on. Very exciting stuff. Um, in addition to that, I just want to show you all how to use the due date feature. So if you're not aware, when you come into your rider portal, you can now set due date. So when you have a new order, uh you can set the due date, you can essentially pick, you know, that that due date available. And then you just click the check and it'll set the due date. And then that's what will um allow it to um, you know, figure out what's going on on uh the due date side. So that's really exciting. So you can keep track. Um, and then if you see the social medias, if you do integrate that in the UI customization, you can see that folks can then follow you on social media. And this is your branded customer uh portal. So if you're new to right C, this is what the customer, well, this is actually the rider portal, but the customer portal looks a a little bit similar. So you can guys can be able to do that. Um, and then multi-currency support. Um, if you're looking to turn that on, you just come to the uh back to the admin portal, go to the uh features, and you're able to uh change the currency of your entire system here. And uh there's a slew of other, you know, custom features that, you know, you all can dabble in. Um, because you can turn off and turn on a lot of different things, uh especially like two-factor authentication. I I would uh tell a lot of people turn that on. Um, and then you can do a lot more. So that's just a quick and dirty on some of the new uh project management features amongst a lot of the things that we're rolling out that we spoke about today. And we have a lot more coming. So this is not the end. Uh, this is really the beginning of um what we're doing here and what we were it's kind of what what we've been setting out to do. So I'm hoping that this has been extremely, extremely, extremely informative um that you guys are excited and kind of pumped up for um, you know, right C two point O and 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 this all launching and and being available um come April first, or actually, if you're, if you get started today, it is available now. Um, but if you're a current customer, all the the new uh pricing and features will be available on April first. So with that said, thank you all for obviously listening, us tuning in, and we want to open it up for questions.